Call over to the work session of the Mayor and Council, the City of Bisbee, County of Co-Chiefs, State of Arizona, held on Tuesday, May 7th, 2019. At 5:30 at the City Hall Building, 915 South Octoberville Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the law over?
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom is excused. Councilmember Joni Giacamino?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns? Councilmember Joan Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein? City staff, Stephen Pocken, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Alberti Chave, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief.
Thank you, ma'am. Before we get started, I want to, Joni, I want to thank you for joining in by phone, but I do have to ask you, are you in a washing machine?
I'm just like four.
Oh.
Yeah, I just got a portable now.
Oh, okay, that's fine. I'm sure other people here, it's true. Sounds like a tennis shoe in a dryer. Okay. All right. You can hear us okay, right?
Right.
Good.
I know.
Okay, good, good. We got you two. Excellent. Just, Pocken, we're going to discuss the budget with you and Ms. Bagley. The floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple of opening remarks. Kerry's going to put you through the detail. After going through the budget draft last week, we were directed to make some changes, some additions and some tractions, and come back to you tonight with the impact of what those changes meant to the budget. The, obviously, and I think you all received a copy in your packet of the summary of the changes that have been made on the basis of those meetings. The, you know, use of fund balance, which is a tactful and diplomatic way of saying more than we're taking in, started out that meeting last week at $334,000. The use of fund balance subsequent to the changes that we made during those two nights' meetings moved that use of fund balance number up to $765,000, which is a net increase of $130,000 or $431,000 rounded. So Kerry's going to take you through the summary to show you what those, what those changes are, and I suspect we'll want to have some discussion on that and possibly some other areas of the budget. The entire budget is open for discussion at this meeting, not just the changes that you've made. So anything else that you wish to discuss after Kerry's done the summary and had that discussion is open until we finish with the meeting. So Kerry, would you?
Mr. Pocken, with your permission and Ms. Bagley, I didn't realize or wasn't paying attention, we do have one person elected address us regarding the budget.
Oh.
So can I ask Mr. Miller if he will come up and I can do that? I apologize, Mr. Miller.
Sorry, I missed the last session several days late and maybe several dollars added, I don't know. The council has that opportunity to adjust the budget to reflect significant tourism changes that is pretty busy. In the last four years, the tourism in Bisbee has been reshaped and flourished due to a number of local and national factors. Everybody's very aware of what former Bisbee Senator Jim Lurie, expansion of the function that tourism work has done, as well as the Ibisbee Committee and things that they have suggested has been implemented, including a one percent bed tax that's now sunsetted. Mrs. Lurie, her work was built on the prior Bisbee Center supervisor, Lona Spirkanovic. I was thinking, Spirkanovic, Spirkanovic, Lona.
Close enough.
Yeah, you know. It was a, her position was evolved because of the necessity of some really important factors that have been impacting the tourism and hospitality industry in the last four years that oftentimes kind of go unnoticed. And there's a literal fire hose of electronic information that's now available for visitors through a plethora of devices. There's data mining that allows for micro-targeting and improves statistical tracking. There's growth in short-term lodging, Airbnb, the RBO, and there's changes from localities offering services as well as offering experiences. So the position of tourism director has now become more diversified and more economically important than it was in the past. And it's often said that there's competition, that many of the visitor centers around the state and in the county have increased their budgets for visitors within the county and the state, that it has become newer, they've become more assertive in some of the same reasons mentioned, is they're trying to attract more people as we are. It's a different kind of tourism marketing environment than it has been for past years. So one of the suggestions I wanted to make is that in the budget, it says Visitor Center, and on the website, it says Visitor Center for the allocation of actual tourism money. I'm suggesting you rename that instead of Tourism, instead of Visitor Center, rename it to Tourism Division, and that more adequately and explicitly depicts the multitude of tourism activities that now occurs. More a nomenclature change than anything, but it's a kind of a psychological thing that says that this is, these activities are much more expansive than they, than they were in the former time. The Visitor Center has become less relevant for Bisbee tourism. Visitation has been stagnant for the last three years, about 25,000 visitors, and that was down significantly six, seven years ago. It used to be 50,000 visitors of the Visitor Center. The Visitor Information Center was established three years ago, has increased now to more than $15,000, uh, $15,000 visitors a year, and that's also increasing. And while the Visitor Center visitation has decreased, electronic media, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and they've all seen more significantly, significantly more activity in the past three years. And that's as a result of the tourism director doing a lot of postings on a very regular basis. And I'm hopeful that so, other than that, that particular change, which I think would reflect tourism activities more, I'm hopeful that 50 grand will still be allotted for advertising within the budget for increased tourism, because that, that amount can be leveraged for more than $30,000, $40,000 with the Arizona Office of Tourism Rule Grant.
And I need to maybe cut you off.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Okay, though.
Okay, Kerry, go ahead.
All right, so, please excuse my voice, I've been battling a cold since Thursday, so if I have a cough and shit, it's just how I'm feeling.
You're room clear.
So as Mr. Pocken mentioned, the changes that we made during the work sessions increased the use of fund balance from 334,000 to 765,000. So I'll just go through what those changes were, and if we can read them as is or change them. In the, in the revenue charges for fees, I, we reduced ambulance fees from 1.2 million to 1 million just to be more in line with what we've been collecting over the last couple of years. We increased wildland fire services from 30,000 to 30,000. It's hard to estimate how much, even what, how many fires they might go on next year, but any money collected here, we put an equal amount in the fire department, wildland fire services expenses, so they'll just kind of cancel each other out, whatever we take in, use there. And then we added a line for fire department out of city services. This would be for emergency calls if they go on outside of the city that would be reimbursed by the, the insurance companies and also the, I forgot what it was called, the...
Manning Creek.
Manning Creek. So I, I put 10,000 here, not really knowing what the, how many subscribers someone could use there. And then on page two...
Let's, this brings up again, in fact, we were talking about in mid-June, being able to go forward with our fee structure.
That's an effort that we'll have to, we haven't begun to undertake yet. It's something that we will have to do?
Actually, yeah, there's, a lot of the departments have that proposal ready to put all together. So I was hoping, again, it's not going to reflect on this budget, because there's no way to figure that out, but it certainly will help us on our bottom line next year. And that's brought, you know, I see the fire inspection fees at, at what they are, and, so that's why I was bringing that up. So in reality, that's, we took 200 out and put some more back in, so there was a, a net loss, but not the full 200s. Okay, thank you.
And so on page two, just the change to the use of reserves.
Any questions?
I've got a question.
Pardon?
I've got a question.
Sure.
You did not put in a line item for the vehicle replacement?
For what?
Vehicle replacement for the fire department.
Actually, the, the 12,000 right there, general fund capital reserves, I kind of calculated what 12,000 a year, over 10 years, would be 120,000 for a new ambulance, just an estimate. So that would be putting 12,000 a year into a reserve account for an ambulance. Most vehicles, we can figure a 10-year useful life, although I think George mentioned maybe five years on an ambulance, so you might have to...
Okay, we had initially talked about a percentage, and I think it would be more than 12,000 a year that'll be going into that.
I don't know, we talked about 10%, that would be, you know, 100, like 100,000, that would be a whole ambulance every year. So I'm not sure what percentage we wanted to use.
Well, we had talked about, we had talked about the 10%, I mean, that was just what was, what was put out there. But I guess this would go along with fee structure, because we had also talked about possibly being able to go out and increase ambulance fees consistent with, or, you know, close to what the areas, surrounding areas are doing. And, I mean, if, if we don't want to put like a dedicated 10% or whatever, whatever increase they're talking about, whether it's a hundred dollars or 200 or whatever, per call, couldn't we put that amount rather than a percentage, because, you know, we don't know, but put that in for the vehicle replacement?
Actually, if I could, I think the conversation was that we were looking at a percentage of the mileage fee, not the ambulance pickup fee. The mileage fee at 16, 50-ish a mile, and we were looking at perhaps 10% of the mileage fee.
Okay, and then, but when we had the strategic plan, that was what we had been talking about, was a, not mileage, percentage of mileage, a percentage of runs.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, I think we need to, you know, really work that out, but I think we need to put in more than just 12,000 a year for vehicle replacement.
So your proposal is?
It, well, I guess it would depend on the average of calls, and maybe the chief or Mr. Venus York can let us know even what our calls are running average a year.
We're running, we're running about 2,800 calls a year. About 1,500 of those are going to be EMS-related, most of them being transported. You also have to take into consideration as far as how much is being collected out of those transports and what is being paid for. What would be, I think would be a good idea for the presentation to come out for is if our ambulance are lasting every five years, because of all the wear and tear and mileage that we do on the transfers, which is generating revenue, if we can figure out a percentage to where every five years, we can start paying in for another ambulance. That way, we're not having ambulance in the shop and losing transfers because we don't have the vehicles to do so.
Right, and we were also mentioning, as I recall, that we probably wouldn't need a new bond every five years.
Also, one way of also doing that is also asking for a rate increase through the state. Currently, right now, our ALS rate, ALS rate at 938.7, and Douglas was at the same rate, and they just raised their rates to 1,218. So if we kept that same 938, but if we raise the rates, that extra money, that extra, like maybe $200, $300, people also can put in for a line item for vehicle replacement as well. Because we're going to try for the state to get a rate increase this, this year.
We can also keep trying every six months as well, to keep the reason, if, if within their parameters.
Right, and we keep talking about ambulance, but we also have other units that we need to keep maintained and replaced.
Correct.
And so I'm...
George, are there specific windows of time on ambulance rates, or can you just apply for them when you need to?
I believe it's like six months.
Every six months.
Okay, when's the last time we actually did it?
It's been a while, probably a couple of...
Four years?
A while.
Two years, three years?
Couple of years.
Couple of years?
Yeah.
Okay. So we have a history of the number of runs we have. We have a good idea, because we're going to be similar to Douglas in terms of the use. And so you're going to be able to get, you should be able to calculate on the basis of those runs, what your likely increase would pencil out to. So, Raul, did you say 2,800 runs a year?
Yeah, it's a little bit.
Okay, and, and so what you're talking about is the base fee for every ambulance run that we do, both in town and transfer?
Correct, and then the difference would be the mileage, whether it's going to Tucson or here.
So 2,800 runs times $200, you know, approximately.
Not, not, not all of those are going to be EMS, it's about 1,500 of those.
Okay, so 1,500, and then cut that in half because of insurance payments, and you're not going to get that whole 200, we know that, because of access and insurance payments are, they're going to decide how much we get. So you're probably, Kerry, you're probably looking at 1,500 times 100. So 1,500 times 100 is 150,000?
It's a reserve account for a new ambulance?
Well, you know, $150,000 would definitely buy you a new ambulance every year. Is that the prudent number or not? I mean, I think it, it might be in the first year or the first two years, but after that, you should level off on, because if you're generating that money on ambulance, EMS, transports, that sort of thing, I think that that money, if it's, if you're going to, if you're going to earmark the money, and, you know, I, I know you started earmarking certain funds for certain uses and only that, you will reach a point where you can't do that anymore, by the way, because then you've got the general fund that you need to support. But, you know, you may want to take a look at that in terms of the first year or two, because I know we've got some older rigs out there that need to be replaced. But once you get into a rhythm, then you might want to, and that's not this year, that's next year or the year following, start looking at that in terms of, if you're going to earmark $150,000 a year, what you're going to earmark it for. And I know that ambulances aren't the only issue.
Andrew Killers has a question.
Sure.
And you're correct, you know, along those lines, but could it be maybe something like vehicle replacements slash equipment, because I think on all the ambulances, we need cardiac monitors, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And what do they run?
They run approximately, what we're using now, the ALP-15, they're about $40,000 together.
$40,000?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then you're going to have, you know, this is not directly related to ambulance, but you're going to have, you need to probably look a little more closely at bowel replacement and other types of, you know, I mean, I would say if you're going to do it with ambulance money, you should earmark it for EMS services. But, you know, like I say, right now, your crying need is, is you've got some older rigs. So, I mean, the first thing you've got to decide from a policy perspective is, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're really intent on earmarking your money, then how much is it going to be and how much is it going to be for? And from year to year, you're going to have to visit that to determine whether or not that needs to be changed or can remain the same. So, you know, and, and then a year from now, you'll be sitting here wondering why the revenues were so much different than what we thought they were going to be tonight, so. And, and believe me, that's the nature, all of you know that's the nature of EMS. Some years, we get over a million, some years, we don't.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you apply for an increase, how long does that take before it goes into effect?
It all depends on them. It could be something that could be granted about within a month, or if they need something, if they need to look over our paperwork or our numbers, but it could take a little longer. I haven't really heard of any other departments having any difficulties getting something passed, or at least getting an answer from ADHS for those increases. If we're asking for an outrageous number than no one else in the county doing, we might have trouble, but as long as we're within certain parameters, I really don't see any problem.
Okay, and we were, and you were talking about a five-year, being able to replace an ambulance every five years, correct? So do you really want to put $150,000 in it right now when we don't even have, we don't have the resource? Yes.
We also have other equipment, ma'am, as I indicated. You know, we go out and beg and we get a used water tender, because we're very grateful for it, but at the same time, we, we actually need another one because of the protection that we're now going to be servicing?
Mr. Mayor, Joan, could, I think your, your question was about, should we put that kind of money in the budget if we don't have an insured revenue source? Is that what you're really asking?
Well, and also the fact that we could talk, it was approached as replacement of ambulances and nothing else. So unless we're going to expand that, but still, I would see how we can afford at this point to put $150,000 in reserve, when we don't have a source.
Right.
And, and I'm not saying that you can't get it, but...
Okay, so essentially...
It's an awful lot.
Well, essentially, what you would have to do is you need to recognize, if you're, if you're, if you're going to see $150,000 at some point, and I think it's doable, if you applied for, if you contacted ADHS tomorrow and started the process, you could possibly have that in effect on July 1st. There's still time. I don't see any impediments to that as long as you're reasonable with your request.
We can also get a clear answer from ADHS here soon.
What we can do is recognize on the, in the general fund revenues and on line item in the fire department budget at the same time, and obviously, if we fail, then we know that money is off limits.
Okay, so what is the money, the mileage being used for right now, for just for general operating expenses?
That's correct.
Okay, so what is that going to do to your operating expenses?
So this money will be in addition, this will be additional money.
The money goes in, the money remains...
Okay, all right, yeah, okay, got it. I got two questions there for you.
I do question the whole $150,000, but I think it's more realistic, you know, than a number of 50 and 75,000.
Well, I mean, we're, we're certainly open to whatever direction we receive from council. On that, that was just a in-the-brain calculation of what likely to be.
Well, we're needing to come up with $765,000.
Well, and doing this won't do that.
No, no. It certainly could add, make it $665,000, as an example.
Yeah, actually, based on what we've done so far, that would be a wash, because you recognized revenue and, if it's $150,000, we're going to put it on both sides, it's going to do nothing to the bottom line that you've got right now.
That's what I was trying to say. If 50 on one side and 150 on the other, does give us a $100,000 difference. That's not the same. But I'm not, I'm not...
Well, like you say, that's, that's a direction, if council's so direct, that's what we do.
Well, and I think they know that if it's not there, they're not going to spend it. I mean, that's, this is all contingent on the rate increase, and it's just increased cost that we wish to improve.
And the one thing that's guaranteed is if you don't have it on expenditure side of the budget by the time you adopt the tentative, it doesn't matter whether you get it or not, you're not going to spend it.
Sure.
I have one, another question. Can we get a more accurate, more accurate figure as to what the average is and, or the number that goes up to, a number of transfers up to Tucson and so on, or EMS transfers?
It doesn't really change what we're talking about, not, trying to argue, we're talking about what we have right now, adding 200 and some dollars to that figure, and we're talking about using that 200 and some dollars for how, times however many transfers, which don't have to do with Tucson. It has to do with anywhere, any time that somebody's picked up.
For EMS purposes?
For EMS.
Okay, well, okay, well, I...
So that's, that's what, that's what I'm saying, is... So, that's what I'm saying is, the formula we need is, how many transfers can we expect? Which is like, how do you do that, but based on...
Okay, and that's what I was asking.
Times the two hundred and some dollars, times our collection rate.
But as indicated, you're saying you're not gonna get the whole two hundred dollars?
That's why we do times collection rate.
That's why, I actually used a hundred dollars instead of two hundred dollars, because that's about the collection rate.
All right. I just wondered something more accurate, and if it's all EMS transfers, that's fine. You know, I just assumed it was the ones, though, the money makers or, as far as mileage was concerned, were the ones that went to Tucson, because the other ones, you're not...
We used fifteen hundred, which is your transport rate, right? How many, how many transfers did you do?
Oh, yeah, no, about fifteen hundred is what we're averaging as far as medical, that going, transported to either our hospital or Tucson, and that's where the rate for the pickup.
Okay, what's the ratio of transfers versus local?
I would say it's about fifty-fifty, pretty close to, it all depends, I mean, every year's different.
So, even if, okay, even if it was fifty-fifty, you'd still be looking at seventy-five thousand?
It depends.
I mean, I'm trying to be as conservative as I can here, so, no unrealistic expectations.
Ms. Clark?
I just wanted to let you know that Joanie says she can't hear, she can't, you're not picking up Joan. And so she's having a hard time, yeah, she's having a hard time hearing us on the phone.
It doesn't need her listening, it's just gonna get blocked. And helps us when she talks, oh, God, get her way around.
That's about thirty-three percent harder, sir.
We can.
Sure.
Okay, so what's the bottom line here, as far as what we're doing? We need to give this vaguely some clear direction.
I think seventy-five thousand is a good figure based on what we're getting, but I just, I just don't feel comfortable, because I feel like we're putting numbers out.
Well, seventy-five, if we're buying the box, if we're buying the chassis and not the box, what, a hundred, ninety, ninety?
It's a possibility around that.
I'm, we're doing some studies right now with some companies. We've had a couple vendors come to our station showing us some new ambulances, and we're also having them figure out some cabin chassis.
Right, and we can send the box out and get it refurbished, too.
And keep in mind, we're not trying to eat the whole apple in one year.
Right.
Okay, the purpose of building a fund like this is to build slowly, so that we get to a point when we need to replace, we have it. And don't, you know, because typically, what we've done is we've gone the other way and we've gotten, bought equipment on these purchases, which costs us extra money in interest.
Yeah, I'm all for this, I mean, I'm not against this whatsoever, but I'm just concerned about the amount of money, and I would like to see this being built up, so that you do have a chance to get vehicles, but one every year, I think that's, I think we need to start out a little smaller than that.
So seventy-five gives us, gives us a vehicle every two years?
So can we compromise and just make it a hundred instead of a hundred and fifty? Just meet in the middle there, in the event that we get it?
Well, I mean, you can do anything you want, but we're estimating based on, I mean, we're not gonna put a hard, we're not gonna stop at seventy-five, or we're not gonna stop at a hundred. If we have a good year and it ends up bringing in a hundred and seventy-five thousand, that's what will be in the fund.
Right.
You will only be allowed to spend seventy-five, but there'll be more in the fund, so.
But that extra will be earmarked strictly for...
That's what we're talking about, yes.
Okay, Ms. Clark?
Yes, as long as it's earmarked, yes.
Okay, so seventy-five on both sides, Carrie.
So no changes for file, there is a...
Some community development, we haven't really come to a decision on the animal shelters.
Page number?
Page twelve.
Page twelve, yeah. We had talked about, based on the numbers that they have, an increase. It just remained the same, and so, what I indicated, they were hoping for a ten thousand dollar increase based on the amount of animals they're taking in, so that's my recommendation.
The animal shelter has been very active, picking up feral cats. Or it's started to be, we're starting to get a lot of feral cats that are being brought into the shelter. And that's really a health and safety issue, more so than just an animal shelter issue. And, you know, we've had this problem with feral cats, different cat colonies all over town for a long time, and, you know, so what can we do about it, what can we do about it? And it seems like, you know, the animal shelter people are, you know, the animal control officer has been bringing, I understand, has been bringing in kittens, you know, to be spayed and released. And they're having, I guess they're having a hard time with the budget as it is. And I know this, I know that we have to cut something, but it's, as far as a health and safety issue, it would be nice if we could find someplace else that we could, you know, get that money from. I don't know if anybody has any suggestions as to what we could do there, but, you know, I would like to see them operating at, pretty high capacity, bringing those feral cats in, because it is an issue. People that live on certain streets here are, they're distressed, and they have been for a long time. And it's, seems like it's an ongoing thing, and they're just now starting to get a handle on it.
Any other comments? So, we have consensus at this point to add the ten thousand.
So we could compromise and add five thousand?
Well, we could add nothing, or add twenty thousand.
I would like to add five thousand.
I think that we need to add the ten thousand, and I have a compromise in mind if you think there's gonna be trouble finding the whole ten thousand. I think that we could look at the swimming pool budget and probably get some money there.
So we back to the ten thousand, what are we adding?
I would like to add the ten thousand.
Yeah, I would also. We're not, we're not, no, you're not. We're talking.
I'm perceiving. Where's my envelope?
I would like to know how you're gonna get money from the swimming pool.
Let's get to the pool and then we can discuss it.
Well, since we're talking about making a decision, okay, all right.
Is, Joanie, can you hear us?
She can't.
No, I can barely hear.
Okay, well, I'll tell you what, I'll come to you now. If we're gonna go to the pool, is that, Mr. Mayor, is that okay?
Sure.
Joanie, can you hear me better now?
Yeah, I can hear you better now.
Okay, that's because I'm standing right next to the pool. Yeah, Leslie brought up the swimming pool, and you had sent me a memo this morning about the swimming pool budget. I guess because Leslie brought it up, I'm gonna let her start the discussion, but perhaps you would like to elaborate on what you said to me?
Or you can even, do you have a copy of that memo?
I do.
You can actually give it to Leslie if you want, because it's not real easy for me to talk. And she can, and she has any questions, you can ask me directly, and she can actually read it, what I wrote to you.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
Okay, this is what Joanie had to say from research, she did. I talked to my boss at Douglas Aquatics, and we compared what the Bisbee budget looks like compared to our outdoor pool in Douglas. The outdoor pool in Douglas is three times larger than the Bisbee pool and operates from June to September Labor Day. She told me they average twenty-five thousand for wages, and they have six to seven guards on duty at all times. The total for the outdoor pool utilities and all can run fifty thousand and seventy-five thousand. This includes water, chemicals, et cetera. She got that from, I got that from our maintenance guy. It depends on the bather load. Again, this pool is fifty meters long and about twenty meters wide. The Bisbee pool is twenty-five meters by fifteen meters. They are planning on running the pool for eight months. Solar cannot sustain the heat needed for that period of time, because we are too high in altitude. Even so, there won't be any guards available due to them all being at school and in sports. If you look at last year's actual wages, you will see that they only spent thirteen thousand. Wages for the summer should not exceed thirty thousand. Last time I had the pool with Lee, we ran it for thirty-two thousand, but I have eleven people on my staff. Again, the electricity should not be as high as it was even for last year. It should run three thousand electric and at the most, and fifteen hundred for water, maybe two thousand. Operational expenses are doubled from the year before actual. The building repair and maintenance and equipment repair doesn't make sense either. They did a major overhaul on the pool the last two years based on money Sloan gave. I would question what repairs they are talking about. If this is accounting for the money that Friends of the Pool are giving, I get it. But if the city is footing the bill, then there needs to be a major overhaul in projected need. Again, I'm sorry I did not point this out earlier, Joanie. Now, my idea for a compromise is, we've never had the pool open for eight months before, and we have no idea if anyone's gonna use it for eight months. What if we kept it open for six months instead? And then we could shave some of this off. That way, that would put us into November, and we could see if people are still swimming in October or November, and maybe shoot for eight months next year.
Just for those of us who don't know, how long was the pool open last year and the year before?
Year before, I'm trying to think, it wasn't open this year, it was closed.
Okay, so last year?
Last year, it was open until October, I think, October. And part of that had to do with, the solar only went in towards the last part of the swim season.
Okay, because, okay, just looking at the numbers, the seventeen, eighteen, actual was sixty thousand dollars, this is the whole budget. And this year, we budgeted ninety-two thousand dollars. And I'm assuming that that was in anticipation of a longer season, is, would that be the reason?
I don't know, Mr. Parkin, I wasn't involved in that process.
And, and we've got forty-four thousand dollars through March thirty-one of the current fiscal year, which would be the second half of last year, and nothing yet for this year. Because remember, our pool season and our fiscal years are split in half, it's kinda hard to wrap your head around. So, the question becomes, and this is, you know, a policy decision that you make by determining how much money you're gonna spend on that pool, is gonna dictate how long you wanna be open this year. And another thing that we have to do is figure out, on the revenue side, how much revenue is being donated by the Friends organization, how much of it is actual taxpayers' dollars? If this were all taxpayers' dollars, it'd be a lot easier to figure. I don't know, is there any carryover balance, Carrie, or anything from right here?
There is, but the amount that's budgeted is really just based on the number of lifeguards and the number of hours. It doesn't figure in what's been donated.
Okay, so do we have on the revenue side, do we have a donation figure in the budget?
Can I ask a question, Steve?
Yes.
I guess my question is, does anybody submit a budget that shows how many lifeguards they plan on having per day at each shift, how many hours of lifeguards they're gonna be working, what exactly the month extension they're planning on doing? Because I might keep, you know, talking solar, solar, but we're in an altitude that is not always conducive with passive, and solar is passive heating. So, I mean, those are things that may be good for it. Yeah, we might go like six months, but an eight-month year, without giving any history on the temperature of the pool and these rates of months we're talking about, it's kinda throwing money away. And if you look at Monster's budget, how much was actually sent, and what's being projected, it's extremely high. And a lot of that, as White said, the repairs, they have done all the major repairs the year before. So what repairs are they talking about as far as that money goes? And again, how many lifeguards are they planning on having? And, you know, I mean, those are just my questions. There's just, it seems like there's a number drawn out there, ooh, ninety-two thousand, oh, it's, what exactly is that gonna pay for it, and how are you gonna justify that?
My question is, how do we, who came up with the numbers?
Yeah.
They took that, the last question we, you know, what comment he made to me, when I made a comment about the passive, the passive solar heating. And that was a comment that he had made, and I said, you know, solar is passive, and he said he talked about it later, and we never did, meet up to the Scotts about. So that's where I'm coming from with that eight-month comment. That was a comment that was made to me. But, I mean, March is, to even heat that pool, to get it up and to keep it above seventy degrees, is gonna be difficult. You know, seventy-two degrees, at any point now, it's seventy-two degrees, which is justified, it was colder. And especially when your ambient temperature outside is an eighty, colder. I mean, you have your warm days, it's justified having it open all of March, you know, and then April comes in and you've got the wind, and the wind is gonna affect how effective your solar panel does. You know, so, and, you know, I mean, I think you could probably extend it August, September, but towards the end of September is when Indian summer ends, and that's when the cold snaps start coming in. So again, it just seems like it's a number that was picked somewhere, you have to know like hours to back it up, or, you know, specific things, that's my question.
May I?
You may.
In the notes before the swimming pool, it says that the pool's gonna have, it has nine part-time seasonal lifeguard positions and one part-time seasonal pool manager position. And it was open through the end of September this past year.
But it was not open eight months.
No.
And I don't know why we, I don't know where this eight months, this eight months came from. I don't know anybody on the council that is, has proposed eight months. I, you know, we've had two months previously, and we were open. Four months would be, would be a great number, because it carries before and after the story.
I mean, we can go back and listen to the tape, I mean, you made your comment, I mean, that's why I'm, I'm probably with the eight-month thing.
Yeah, Joanie, I made the comment that, I made the comment that the solar company indicated it could heat for eight months. That's the comment I made.
But the fact of the matter is, you have to look at altitude when you buy solar panels. It's like, doesn't the human need this colder anymore?
Okay, we're past the eight months, we're not, we're not, we're not, I'm not advocating eight months, Joanie, nor was I ever advocating it.
That's fine, but then again, that takes us back to, how exactly can you, how exactly can the lifeguards be working? Because that is a big budget. I can, that, ninety-two thousand dollars for a pool that size for, you know, either four months or even six months? That's astronomical.
I can answer how it was lucky. I can answer how it was budgeted.
And I'm telling you, there's a job that I work at, which is the Douglas Pool, and I talk to my boss to get numbers.
Right, Ms. Bagley?
Um, so when, we originally budgeted for the pool, not, not this current year, but the previous year when they first opened, um, we budgeted from Memorial Day through Labor Day. Um, and then however, whatever time the pool opened until it closed. And two lifeguards plus a manager, so we figured out how many hours that was total that we needed to cover and times the minimum wage. And that's where that salary amount came from. I think in reality, the pool either wasn't open as many hours as they planned, you know, not, not till seven at night, or whatever they originally planned on. And so that's why it came in a lot less than what was budgeted.
And also the weather, too.
Mm-hmm, and, right.
You may.
I was just gonna say, that's completely normal, I worked at that pool for three years and we had monsoon seasons, and the pool is never open every day. And you end up sending lifeguards home frequently, and they never, almost never work their full hours that they're scheduled for. But it just still houses their, like a thirty-two thousand dollar jump from one year to the next.
Well, it's answered because it was figured for eight months.
Okay.
That's, that's the answer, correct? No. Memorial Day to Labor Day, is that what you said, Carrie?
No, that's.
Laura, yes.
Memorial Day to Labor Day is what this is predicated on.
But you also had an increase in, in the, uh,
Minimum wage.
Minimum wage, too. Oh, okay. But still to jump up, I mean, if our actual numbers from last year were forty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-five, and then to jump up fifty thousand dollars, I mean, that's a heck of an increase, and I don't, I mean, I, I think it's, that is unrealistic.
Well.
Well, that's only through March, though.
Um, Ms. Mayor, um, just looking, our, our last full year of part-time salaries was twenty thousand. And your, your, your budgeted figure for eighteen, nineteen was forty-three, of which you've spent thirteen through March. So that thirteen thousand is the second half of last season, okay? So you're gonna have, um, one month in this fiscal year, 'cause if you start, if you start on Memorial Day weekend, your fiscal year ends a month later. So you're, you're probably spending about, realistically, with the staffing that you've got for the last two years, you're spending twenty thousand dollars a year on direct expenses for part-time salaries, which they're all part-time. So, if you're looking for a place in the pool budget to reduce the budget, uh, to me, that's the line. Um, you know, electric and water, uh, expenses are, are, as you can see here, based on history, although, you know, we could argue whether or not we're spending, or we're operating most efficiently, but that's, that's something that, um, if, if we can do that, that's something we have to practice starting with this pool season. Um, but to me, if you were looking for ten or fifteen thousand dollars right now, uh, you could take that out of part-time salaries and you wouldn't hurt yourself in that.
I think that's a good compromise to give to the animal shelter.
Would you have money coming in from the Friends?
Um, of the pool. Fifteen thousand we budgeted in the.
Correct.
Into revenue?
Into revenue.
And they hit that last year's, uh, he said that.
Right.
There's a carryover. You have, you have much?
I think they still have about almost thirty, well, twenty, twenty, somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand that they originally collected. Because they, they are only covering from, um, after Labor Day, or, no, I'm sorry. Um, from when, when the students would go back to school in eighth August until whenever they close the thing.
Okay, so I think you would be safe if you changed part-time salaries from forty-six to twenty-five?
I agree with that.
And just a reminder with, with, okay, if you're gonna use that, uh, to, as your compromise position on the animal shelter, then you're, you're still just trading dollars, you're not, you're not reducing your deficit. Okay, so we're still at seven sixty-five. Well, we might be at seven sixty-four.
So we're increasing the, the animal shelter to the original eighty thousand, then?
Oh, if that's your compromise.
Good to me.
Sounds good to me.
Let's see what it looks like in spending.
I was just keeping the tally in my head, so far, we're still at seven sixty-four. And, at six twenty-seven. Just mindful of your time.
For clarification for me, you're just keeping the shelter at that ten thousand dollar increase?
Yes.
Yes, right.
But we're saving twenty, twenty-one on salaries? Here, so, okay, so we're.
That's correct.
Three, no, it's ten.
Yeah, so, I'm sorry, you're at seven hundred and fifty-five deficit.
Okay. That sounds right. Laura, you have to.
I am. Can I get the ball along here?
All right, Ms. Bagley, we're back on page one.
Okay, so, now, uh, page fourteen, um, admin of the General Government. Um, we talked about eliminating the health reimbursement account because it, it's not being used fully. Um, but then in, um, offering to cover a portion of employees' dependent health care expense. So, we looked at, um, twenty-five percent of that. We only have, I think it was, um, ten, eleven employees that are paying for our dependent health insurance payment. So, um, helping with twenty-five percent of that would, um, be the eight thousand two ninety-six. Now, I don't know if that would change, you know, if we, if the city chipped in, if more people would add their dependents. But that's what it would stand out with who's in line. So, that would, um, they, well, we had, I think we had budgeted ten thousand in the health reimbursement account. And then the professional fees is to manage that account. Um, so we wouldn't need that anymore since we wouldn't have that account to manage.
Do we have a bottom line figure between us two, what, what it's costing us? What it will cost us? Between what we allocate, assuming that people would have used the health account this coming year, uh, the same amount as last year versus what it's gonna cost us with this twenty-five percent?
Um, okay.
It's, it's not possible it's that old, twenty-five percent is what I'm saying.
Well, this year, it's, it was used a little bit more, I, I would say maybe three thousand.
Yeah.
It'll end up being about three thousand versus eighty-two. But then, um, again, we're all, we're not having to pay those professional fees, that was five thousand we calculated for that.
Okay. Good, good. So it's twenty-five percent of dependent coverage.
Dependent?
Premium. Dependent.
Mm-hmm.
Whether it's wife?
Right, spouse, yeah. Spouse or, or children or family.
Got it, okay. That's a good start. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, then this benefit that we're talking about, and I think it's great to help, um, our employees with dependent coverage, but what about those that don't have dependents on their insurance? I mean, they're, in a sense, being penalized then.
Can, let me take a swipe at that one. What we're attempting to do here is normalize things, we're not trying to create exceptions. Um, for instance, my healthcare benefit from the city of Winslow, when I worked there, uh, they paid for ninety percent of my premium, and they paid for fifty percent of my dependent coverage, okay? Because the city of Bisbee never covered dependents, that makes us the exception, that does not make us the rule, okay? Um, I would anticipate that there may be a few employees who might wanna take advantage of our health coverage because we're paying twenty-five percent of it now, or we were paying nothing before. Um, you're gonna have a certain number of people who are single, or choose not to, or because their spouse has coverage from their employer, um, that, that are gonna cover or not cover the dependents some other way. There are so many variables that you can't really predict, um, or, or determine fairness, if you will, um, based on, um, you know, what we're doing here, what we're, what we're attempting to do. Um, and because, and I might remind you, at this point, this budget doesn't include any increases in wages for anyone um, at this point. And you're still fighting a fairly large shortfall. Um, the, uh, what we're, you know, for those who aren't providing that coverage, they're not paying anything anyway. For those that are paying that coverage, you're paying all of it. All we're doing is we're reducing the amount they pay. So if you choose not to cover your dependents, the amount you pay every month is zero. If you choose to, 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 uh, cover your dependents, you pay a lot. I forget what the family premium portion is. Um, but it's significant, six hundred.
Eight, nine, five hundred.
Nine hundred dollars, okay? So, um, so, I, I'm not, I'm not saying this is, and, and quite frankly, we're not necessarily trying to be fair, we're trying to be equitable because the high cost of healthcare is eating up so many paychecks. That's what we're trying, that's what we're trying to soften and blow on. And, uh, on the family coverage, I, I, I know it's unfair to ask, how much does twenty-five percent cover on a family package?
It would be about two hundred, right?
So, the family, instead of costing them nine hundred a month, it's gonna cost them seven hundred a month, it's still a significant amount. And, by the way, everybody knows I'm only gonna be here a little while. Uh, but I think that's something we need to continue to look at year after year. I would love to give fifty percent, or sixty, or seventy, whatever. Um, however, you know, we've gotta solve this problem in small doses.
I think the employees will understand that we've started someplace. Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just hoping that this is the beginning of. And, and quite frankly, as you cover more of those healthcare costs, the more of your employees are gonna start to roll.
Perhaps. Ms. Bagley?
Yes, well, page twenty-two, that was just removing.
Let me, then, let me back up, I'm sorry. No, you did this, anything, but I, I think that page eighteen, we need to understand that, when we're talking about how does this figure come, this is part of the reason, because this is a, over a sixty-one thousand dollar increase. And that's proposed, assuming we can get funding for that, so, um, we still, as a council, uh, we, we can put this in there, uh, but as a benchmark, but we still, as a council, have to make a decision how we want to try to spend this, whether it's in-house or outside, or, or whatever. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was understood for, uh, the public as we're, as we're going along here. So, with that, we're off to page one.
Uh, twenty-two, we just took the, um, C-one line for Internet out. Then, uh, page twenty-four, police department, that was to, um, add the plus one to the police salary, it came to eighty-one thousand three seventy-two.
Does everybody understand what I was talking about with plus one? It indicates that if they're up to strength right now, we need to hire because when they lose, they typically lose two and three at a time. And we know for a fact that there's several coming out. And instead of getting caught behind the eight bar each time, then we'll be proactive, try to be slightly ahead. So that plus one doesn't help us the first year on overtime, but it helps us the next year on overtime. So if we maintain a plus, attempt to maintain a plus one status over a longer run, it keeps the overtime down. And so that's why I asked for figures as a plus one.
Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I play the devil's advocate for a second?
Sure.
Um, the, uh, I'm, I'm, now, I'm gonna speak to you, uh, from thirty-five years of budget experience in public safety and everything else. Um, and I had this conversation with one of you already this afternoon. Um, if there's anything that is true, no matter what you do to try and cut down on overtime, you will fail. Guarantee it. You know, go back ten years, go back twenty years in our own budgets, in our own financial statements, uh, you only gotta go back two years to see a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars in overtime. Okay? Yes, there's various and sundry reasons, and they'll all be different from year to year. But that is the nature of the beast in police work and in firework, um, any EMS work. Um, and so, I, 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 I don't want anyone to feel like this recommendation is actually going to have a significant impact on overtime. I guarantee you, Carrie will remember a year from now when I'm long gone, and she's putting together the next budget, and she looks at the overtime figure, she will know I was right, okay? Uh, that's just the nature of the beast, so, um, attempts to determine how many officers you need in order to keep your overtime low, uh, to me, is an exercise in futility. Overtime is gonna be what it's gonna be because police work and firework are, are the, are the two, the two professions that we provide, um, where there is no schedule. We do not, we do not know what's gonna happen.
I totally agree with that, having been there. But I, I also disputed it a little bit in that if we don't plan, uh, for, um, the attrition, and we will, it will happen again, and our department will be at six people, and they'll be running twelve-hour shifts, it's dangerous to them and it's dangerous to the citizens. And we guarantee you, that's huge amounts of overtime. And that is as a result of manning, not as a result of an unknown force. So we, you're right, you can't control in, in fire or police, you can't control the unknown, but you can attempt to control the manning.
Right, now, here's the good news. Um, the whole theory behind adding this eighty-one thousand dollars, uh, to plus one, as, as, as you, as you call it, um, I don't call it plus one, I call it trying to stay at full. Uh, because the reality is, is that Albert's gonna lose another guy, as soon as you put this in, as soon as you put this budget into effect, he's gonna lose, he's gonna be down again. Um, what you're doing is you're, you're budgeting for authorized positions, not for what's really gonna happen. And so, now, what you're doing, and I, and I think if everyone keeps this in mind, um, I don't have a problem with budgeting eighty-one thousand dollars, I just, I don't, I don't want people to think that overtime's gonna go down because it's not. But I also want you to know, this gives the police department. But I also want you to know, this gives the police department the ability to keep one more FTE, to keep the rotation going so that as they rotate out to go to other departments or retire, whatever they do, he has another position that he can, that he has already authorized that he can hire. So, you know.
We're sort of talking about the same thing.
We are talking about exactly the same thing, but I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm saying this because that's the reality of what's going to happen with the numbers. So, and, you know, you may be showing another eighty-something thousand dollars in your expenditures, but the reality is, is very unlikely that you're going to spend it.
Correct.
But you will spend the overtime.
Yes.
I got a nickel that says that.
Oh, pardon.
I'm a, I'm a big better.
Please.
Chief.
No.
Okay, to be fully staffed, how many employees do you need?
Well, let's see, that's kind of a tough question. It depends on by what standard you're talking about. We've been, we've been fourteen. The hope is to be back to fifteen with this plus one. But if you go back to the old historical numbers, you know, we were at twenty at one point. So we're not as close as we once were. We no longer have a school resource officer. We don't have the, the funding to support that on our own. We had that before under a grant. We don't have, we don't have anybody in a detective position or anybody assigned to the federal task force, which where, is where we come up with Rico funds and Rico money and federal asset money to use for equipment and things of that nature. We don't have anybody in those positions because the fourteen that we do have, or the fourteen that we're trying to maintain is, in reality, with fourteen, we have sometimes only eight working, including myself and Deputy Chief Long. You know, right now, we have two guys in the academy and two guys on train. So in reality, we're operating at, at nine right now. Although if you look at the numbers, we're paying for thirteen, we don't have that many working because we don't, they're not, they're not standalone police officers yet. We have the two in the academy, we have two more vacancies we're trying to fill. In fact, we'll be testing on Thursday, just try to fill these positions, possibly a third position. And those, one of those vacancies has been vacant since March. If we hire somebody and get them in the academy here at Coaches College in July, they will not be standalone usable by themselves officers until March. So it's one-year replacement time. So that, that extra person, that fifteenth person, gives us left behind some breathing room when somebody does leave. It helps, and I can't help with that overtime. But Mr. Parkin says, if you look at that fifteenth, sixteen, seventeen fiscal year, our overtime was way up, but if you look at our salaries, our salaries were down low because there was only six of us here working. And it was, everybody was making overtime, but we weren't paying all those positions. So it's, it's a little bit of a challenge, but fifteen, I'd be grateful to get to fifteen.
Okay, so you're saying minimum of fifteen, fully would be twenty, correct?
I would, yes.
So could we maybe?
Fully staffed is whatever council determines.
Okay, and that's what I'm saying, could we look at possibly for, for the police, compromising here somewhere between that fifteen and twenty and at least go to seventeen? I mean, I'll just be comfortable.
With all due respect, we were hoping that the deficit would go down tonight.
And can I, can I add one more thing just to, I don't know what George feels squared up, but George, you know, the fire department and the police department, we're all disabled. Public safety is, it's a challenge. And I can add, I'm sure we could try to add two more positions to there, we could try to get up to sixteen or seventeen. But in reality, we're always going to be chasing our tail. And, and what I mean by that is they're going to be here, you know, they're going to, they'll stay for their two years, but two years later, they're gone. And that two years, that I use them for, it takes me another year to replace them. Until we can do something about the, the pay rate, the twenty-five percent, I think, is huge going towards dependent coverage. Because we have some officers, some employees, I don't know how they, they survive on, on what they take home after paying for their dependent coverage. So that twenty-five percent is going to be a big, big deal for those officers. That's a big step in the right direction as far as I'm concerned. But without raising that pay lift rate a little bit, it's just going to be a challenge. And that's the same for both departments, it's just public safety, why, it's just, it's going to be the challenge to deal with. We're having a hard time replacing the people that we're trying to replace as it is. So to be honest with you, if you gave me sixteen, if you gave me seventeen, it might take me two years to get those positions done. And then still try to replace the ones that leave on top of that because the pay is just such a challenge. So, thank you.
Do we still get the governor's grant to fund that one position?
No.
Is it gone or is it, we haven't applied?
I'm not sure which position that is.
At least of the, the, what was it, the officer safety grant?
The, the safety schools grant, that was the SRO position. That's what they.
That's what I'm saying, have we not applied or has it gone away or?
No, we haven't applied for, to be honest with you, we couldn't, we couldn't continue to, to man that. There's very strict restrictions on how that officer has to be used, how they're allowed to be used. And when push came to shove, public safety for Bisbee had to come first and we were repeatedly pulling that officer out of the school system to work the road. And then that's money that we're not, we're not using the right way. So back, way back even before I became chief, I think that position, shortly thereafter, we didn't get the grant for the next cycle and we have to put in, put in for it again because it's not a, it's a challenging grant to deal with. And although it does give us a position, again, right now, having an experienced officer to put in a school, Marvin, you have to be very self-disciplined, dealing with your time. And we're, we have a lot of new officers, we're trying to bring them along, and we have some great officers, some great employees, but it's a challenge to fill that position at the schools. Now, we have talked with Mr. Woody a little bit on maybe a, going in with them and between the two of us, partially funding a police officer in the future. But that's just something that we've talked just in passing, we haven't sat down and crunched any numbers on that as of yet.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Ms. Van.
Page twenty-five, we added in the fifty thousand for the pub hooks and the cases.
On the fire department, how many permits do we have?
Six, I need to correct that.
Okay. Thank you. I thought I could count. Thank you.
Page twenty-nine, just upped a wild end there, so this expense before you to match the revenues. The transfer capital reserve, that's what we, we would change that to the seventy-five, I think we talked about. And then, there's, how about safety grants, they're ninety-four thousand they would probably pour. And the nine, nine thousand four hundred would just be ten percent grant match if that's required. I'm not sure what the grant match is.
The grant match total will be about approximately nineteen thousand. This is going to be for a, I believe the grant was over one hundred thousand dollars and that's going to be for the SCBA's Cascade System, Phil Station, for everything that we have because we're three years over expired for, past the fifteen years for those SCBA's. So that would put us back in OSHA and MAA PA standards.
So the total amount of money is how much?
I, the, the toll, the toll.
The total amount of the grant?
I would have to look that up.
Because we're talking, I mean, we've got ninety-four hundred dollars in here for a grant match.
I, I was, understood the grant was ninety-four thousand. Is that not correct?
No, so what we put, the grant, I believe, is about around four hundred thousand and we, for our population, we have to match five percent for that FEMA grant of that fund in order to get that.
It's closer to twenty grand instead of the?
Yes, it'll be closer to twenty, correct? I believe it was a little bit over nineteen-three, four nine nine.
Do we have that grant accounted for somewhere else here?
In the public safety grant, I, um, fifty-seven. I have ninety-four thousand total, but we can change that to four hundred thousand if that's what it is.
It would only be maybe five, five percent.
Well, no, we still have to go for the whole grant in the budget.
If we, yeah, we have to have it in there.
I can make those corrections. And if, if they get the grant, it, you know, they, you get the revenue and you spend it, it cancels itself out, so it's better to have four.
You have some FEMA grant?
Yes, ma'am.
And the next would be building maintenance.
Yes.
Before we go on, while we're on the fire department, you had, at the last meeting we had, you asked about the plus, like you were talking with the police department, the plus one. And then we, you asked about the fire department on a plus one.
And George indicated that the rover was basically his plus one at that point, but that he would gladly accept more people.
Yeah, to be fully, fully staffed, we would have seven per shift. That's, that's fully staffed.
And what do we have?
Right now, there's six per shift and then we have the one rover that fills in, I guess there's vacation or stolen.
So he was basically took plus one that we authorized last year.
So, so with that, Mr. Mayor, so we're not at full staff. I believe I talked to the chief about this the other day. That plus one is giving us an added, closer to what our full, our, our full would be. It's helping us out. In order for us to be full, full-time and have a third guy up at station two in the most dangerous area, we would have to be at seven, seven, seven. So we can man a third guy with up in area two instead of just two people responding to a bar, you can have three people responding to a bar to be a lot more safer. So this, the rover is just helping us out, but to be at full staff, eight, seven, seven, seven.
Yes, to be fully staffed, you need, you need two more people.
Correct. And also to be with the safety rover, two in, two out, especially up in overtime.
So we're not even applying for two in, two out?
Not necessarily, not, not initially. We would have to do a full on page, but as far as everybody there, right now, we're, we're maintaining we're not even with the two in trouble.
And even with two more people, we're not guaranteed if you're on ambulance or other.
Right.
Still don't have two.
It would help, but like you said, we'll be there too.
Okay. Are we on page thirty-five?
Page thirty-five, building repair and maintenance, it's increased to, from fifteen thousand to forty-five thousand for repairs to the pub house and the section house, I think, the cemetery.
Um, a question on that, has Joe been out to look at that to maybe give us some numbers a little closer?
No, he has not.
He's a little, a little crazy.
We, we had an issue of, of a bee hive in the, in the section house last week, so we didn't want Joe up there on the roof.
Killer bee guy got to restock his supply.
And the last change to the general fund is page fifty-three, increasing contingency from fifty thousand to a hundred thousand.
Page?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three, thank you. I guess you said that in this. Okay. Mr. Parkin?
Yes.
I think we'd better call it.
Well, you got two minutes.
Yeah, well, Mr. Higgins have a nicotine withdrawal.
I'm sure you'll give Mr. Higgins enough time for one.
I would, I would suggest that we come back together with, after studying this, with some ideas as to how to cut. We, we know, we're walking out of here with more money. And so I would suggest we get together and try to look at this and realistically come up with some areas that each of us can look at to try to cut that seven hundred, whatever it is that.
Now, keep in mind two things. There is a hundred thousand dollars in contingency, okay? That's money that we only spent, God help us. And then typically, and I'm just drawing on my own experience, an acceptable level of use of fund balance has typically been in the two to three hundred thousand dollar area, okay? So with a hundred thousand dollar contingency, I would say that you're probably relatively safe in the two fifty to three fifty area. So, I mean, that's still a fairly significant mountain to climb. And given the fact that you know that the vast majority of this is personnel costs, you're going to have to make a decision, what you want us to bring you is going to be a decision on what you believe is important to have in the budget, okay? In the eight years that I was a regular employee here, I think we, we actually used our contingency one time and that was a failed wall, retain wall, okay? Legitimate use for contingency. So even though people will have different ideas as to what they feel is important in terms of how you, how you balance your budget, you're balanced right now, okay? In accounting terms, you're balanced. You're using fund balance to do that, okay? And when you're done, you'll still be using fund balance to do that. The question is for you is, how much do you feel is a safe and effective level? So, because like I said, seven out of eight years that I worked here before, we only actually used it one time.
Right. Mr. Higgins? I move that we adjourn.
Seven.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second to adjourn, although there's a favor seen above as David P. I.
Aye.
The opposing side, we stand adjourned for, we're going to start at seven oh five, so five minutes.
Long enough for a minute.